We now reconvene the regular meeting of Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
City Attorney will be right back.
All right.
He left his notebook back there.
Okay. Yes, that's correct. So we will wait for him to return so we can have a report out on action taken during closed session, and then we will follow it with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Or we probably could come back to that agenda item and just flip it. How about that? How about we rise and have the invocation from Pastor Bernie, and then have the Pledge of Allegiance, and then have report out.
Well, let us pray. Our God, as we stand in this season of celebration, at the threshold of a new year and a new decade, we confess our need of your presence and your guidance. This is a season of celebration and festivals of light and peace for many. Our city has evidence of the season. Many of our homes are adorned with lights, our streetlights with symbols of the season, our recent children's parade with lights, and the laughter and joy of many during the upcoming snow day. And as we celebrate, we're keenly aware of the darkness and violence that continues to raise its ugly head in our city, more than any of us care to witness. So God, have mercy on us. May the darkness and evil in our community be exposed, and may justice be served. And with our budget restraints and a myriad of needs of our citizens, our homeless situation, our despair, there are more needs in our city and county than can be met. So we call upon you for your wisdom. Provide us with your help, guide us, and remind us that we truly need each other, and above all you. Help us with creativity and innovation, and ways that we can solve the challenges before us. And help us to humbly put our hands in your hand, and to trust you, and to seek your will for our lives in this coming year. In the midst of life's uncertainties and the days ahead, assure us of the certainty of your unchanging love, and help us to love our neighbors like never before. In the midst of life's temptations and the pull of our stubborn self-will, help us not to lose our way, but to have the courage to do what is right in your sight, regardless of the cost. And we pray this night for our nation, for its leaders. We pray for our mayor, our city council, our city manager, all our department heads, and all the employees of our city who do so much for us to add quality to our lives. We pray for your continued protection on our police and fire departments, and all those who serve in our armed forces, especially those downrange and in harm's way. Be with them, and especially be with their families in this season. As we look back over this past year, we thank you for your goodness to us, and the progress that we have made in our community, far beyond what we've deserved. We ask you for your forgiveness where we've wronged another, hurt someone, denied what is the truth, and simply not lived our best before you. And lastly, God, renew us with a strength for your presence, and the joy of a collaborative heart, helping to build a community worthy of the people who call Lompoc their home. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll have a report out from Action Take during closed session by our city attorney.
Mayor, real quick.
Yes.
I just realized I left a part in my office. I'm going to run back to, so he'll do his, and I have to get my other piece. I'll be right back.
All righty.
Thank you, Mayor. City council tonight met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda, an existing litigation item in the case Joel Alcox versus City of Lompoc in the United States District Court, Central District of California. Council authorized by a 5-0 vote for a legal firm handling that case for the city to file an appeal of the court's partial ruling against the city on a motion for summary judgment in that case. Council discussed other aspects of the case, but other than that appeal, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you for that. We have no presentations presented elsewhere, and we currently have no presentations on the agenda. And while we wait for the city manager to return and give his report, I would like to remind the public that City Hall, the library, and there's one other facility, the Dewey Center, and I believe the Anderson Rec. Center will all be closed during the coming holiday week. There still will be trash service, and landfill will still be open, but on the days of the holidays, there will be adjusted pickup services for solid waste. Trying to think if there's any... Oh, he's back. All right. So, as soon as he gets to the microphone, we'll have our city manager report. And I just mentioned City Hall being closed, but if I failed to mention anything else regarding City Hall's closure, let me feel free to add.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, so we will be closed the week of December 23rd through the 27th. All the employees would be using vacation time, comp time, voluntary furloughs, and other items during this period, so that helps lower the cost for the cities by using up some of actually the accruals that we have, where, you know, vacation time saves up, it adds to the city's costs. Sorry, running. The library received a $10,000 grant from the Federal Library Services and Technology Act funds administered through the California State Library. These funds are for pop-up makerspace programs for tweens and teens, enabling library staff to expand on an already successful Science Fridays, which brings STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics programming to the library. Federal grants don't pay for the staffing, but it does allow the library to purchase books and supplies for new programs. Excuse me. Another one, this is good, for everyone who needs a New Year's resolution. Registration is now open for the first fund run of 2020. Make the New Year's resolution and come join the fund. The event will take place January 1st, 2020, so you can start the year off right, with a 9:00 AM start time at Riverbend Park Multipurpose Trail. Any of the... The rest of the details are on our city's homepage. There's a large little advertisement for it there, but it'd be a great little resolution for everyone to start. One that I thought was really good is, as of Friday, December 13th, we've talked about it before, but Surf Beach is officially open all year round. Vandenberg Air Force Base will continue to count the violations as they've done in the past, but when the 50 violation limit is reached, the closure will not be enforced. So, you know, unless there's some egregious act, someone purposely goes out there and does something, it will be open all year round. So that's wonderful. It was the final. We sort of go along with the different steps, and the last step was on Friday, December 13th, so that was a good thing. One more, I have two more, actually. This one, I always like to talk about the good things that happen in the city, the good things that the staff does, everything I can, because we are a wonderful city, and we need to hear the good stories. So I'm proud to announce on this particular story about the incredible staff we have working for the city of Lompoc. On December 6th, at approximately 3:45 in the afternoon, a landfill customer drove up in his truck to dump his trash. However, when he reached the area to dump, he just stopped. Staff went over to check on him and noticed the gentleman in the truck had slumped over and did not appear to be responsive. Staff tried to wake him, but to no avail. Staff noticed the truck was still in gear, reached in, put it into park, and then they checked on him again and found him not to be breathing. At this point, staff had been in contact with emergency dispatch, who directed them to begin CPR. The landfill staff pulled him out of the truck, lowered him to the ground, and proceeded to perform CPR. These are the employees... These employees began using the training they had received from the city for just a situation. So we do these trainings throughout the year, and it paid off. Staff continued with CPR until paramedics arrived, who were then required to use a defibrillator to help resuscitate the person. Paramedic said without the staff's quick reaction and immediate use of CPR, the person would most likely not have survived. The man's family came back a few days later to let the staff know at the landfill that the gentleman survived and was breathing on his own. The family told the staff, and they are now... That they are now all part of this man's family, and they couldn't thank the staff enough for what they had done. We plan to be recognizing these employees for their lifesaving efforts at our council meeting in January, so I just... I think it's a great tale around the holidays that we need to look at. Again, I just want to thank the employees. I think I met with them today. It was really pretty beneficial to the city that they were there. The last one I'd like to do is ask the police chief and our library director to come up for a very special presentation, and they have a guest, I believe, here, too.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to talk to you a little bit tonight about a project that has been long in the making. So, back in 2007, then-police chief Bill Brown, who's now our sheriff, had a great idea to have a history book put together of the Lompoc Police Department for the first 100 years. And there was a great deal of work done, but unfortunately, it was never brought to fruition. And ultimately, about a year ago, then-police chief Walsh kind of resurrected the momentum for this, and we were able to find a software to recover all this work that had been done. And Chief Brown, at that time, had commissioned one of our local citizens and a librarian by the name of Joe Carlson. So Joe did all this work for years, and I don't think he ever thought it was ever going to come to fruition. And finally, about a month and a half ago, we finally got the book published, thanks to the donation and the hard work of our police foundation, who provided the funding to have it published, and it's entitled Peace in the Valley, and it's quite a book. It has the history from when the police department started, and some other interesting points I never knew. There was one longstanding chief that served for about 33 years, and between him and his successor, there was an interim chief or a part-time chief, whose name was Benjamin Buford...
Hoover.
Hoover. Right. Benjamin Hoover. So, quite interesting stuff in here, but it talks about how the police department evolved over all the years and how it grew, and even has the salary scale back in the day. There's a lot of good information in here. So it's a great piece of history, and it is my pleasure to present this to our librarian, Sarah, to have her put this in our library. And I also want to introduce Mr. Carlson, our author, who never thought it would come. And he's not a big fan of public speaking, but I threatened him, so he showed up tonight. And so I'd like him to say a few words, too.
A few words. Now, it was a pleasure, and if you realize, that when the colony started in 1879, there wasn't any police department. They didn't think they had to have one. And it's in the book that one founder of the city, it's just said, "There's no purpose in having a police department. There was no alcohol in the town." And so that's what apparently breeds problems. But finally, in August of 1899, the city council decided they needed a chief of police. And that's where it all started, from August the 19th, 1899, to August the 19th, 1999. 100 years of great history in this little town, and it is a very good little town. I like it.
I also want to add that we're going to send a couple of copies to the Congressional National Library, so it could be entered into the history archives there, too. So we're really proud of this. I'm glad it finally came to fruition, and I know the sheriff is elated, too, because it was his vision, too, to have this come out. And he's a big history buff, if you know him. He loves to talk about history, and he knows more about Lompoc history than most of us. I mean, I've had many a lecture about Lompoc's history through him, so it's a good thing. But thank you all very much, and...
Chief, before you step away, if anybody would like to get a copy as a Christmas gift for someone, how can they purchase one?
They can purchase one by contacting the Lompoc Police Department at the front desk, and our records personnel have them, and it's for the total cost of $30 per buck, so you can get one.
So anybody who has history buffs in their family can get a Christmas gift?
It makes a great Christmas gift.
If you haven't shot yet. And for those of you... And our author is available locally to potentially sign, so there's another benefit. It improves the value. And then last but not least, this will be on our local shelf, local history shelf in our library soon?
Yes.
So we can check it out and read it if we would like to from our library. Thank you. Thank you all.
It's a signed copy, too.
And it's a signed copy, too. Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you for the hard work on it, and we really appreciate it. All righty, back to the agenda. The consent calendar is all items considered to be routine and to enactment after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussions will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication is near the end of the meeting. We will open the floor for public comment on the consent calendar of three minutes max, so if there is an item that you would like to speak to on consent calendar, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening, council members. John Lynn, Lompoc resident. I certainly hope that you will pull the zoning code from the consent calendar, so we can have a little discussion.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Are there any items to be... Oh, come on forward. I'll reopen the floor for public comment. If there's anyone else that wants to speak on consent calendar, please come forward. Is it consent calendar or an agenda item?
Okay.
Thanks for helping him out, Stacy. All right, back to consent calendar. We have closed public comment. Any items to be pulled? Councilmember Mosby.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you for getting the copy of this for item number four. Were there copies available at the...
No, I just, I ran out. I will... I can go and do that, though.
And I'd like to pull item six and item seven.
Any other discussions or items to pull? So, items six and seven will be discussed after our agenda, just before the final oral Do I have a motion for items one through five and item eight?
I'll make the motion that we accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And I have a second. So the motion is approve items one through five and eight, with six and seven pulled for later. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. There are no staff presentations, announcements, or requests, so we will now open the floor for oral communications regarding city matters that are not on the evening's agenda. So if you have an item that is not on the agenda that is a city matter that you would like to speak to, please step forward.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I appreciate your dedication, perseverance, and hard work on behalf of Lompoc and its citizens. I want to thank you particularly for your work toward opening Surf Beach, real important for citizens, especially those that can't afford to go further for a swim. Also, I read in the paper about your work towards the development on Bailey Avenue. We really need housing. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Good evening. My name is Ulysses Torres, and I'm just here to do a request about the... Having the need to fix soccer fields. Currently, right now, my club has about 100 kids from the age of five through 14, and we just don't have any good fields to play our practice or home games. My home games, I gotta go play to Away to Ventura every weekend, because some of the other teams don't want to come and play here. So that's my main concern about fixing the soccer fields.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and bring it back to agenda item number nine, the adoption of Resolution Number 6292, parentheses 19, adopting the City of Lompoc Wildfire Mitigation Plan. And I believe we have our utility, electric utility manager, T. K. Singh, to present.
It'll be a quick minute. They're going to demonstrate. Stacy, did you pass the copies? Can we get the light, please?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council, and public. Today, I have prepared a wildfire mitigation plan presentation, and my goal is to provide our city council information about this wildfire mitigation plan, as it's required by Senate Bill 901, and then request approval from the council to adopt this plan, and then approve annually. In this presentation today, I'm going to give some background, discuss a bunch of SB 901 requirements, and then conclude with summary. And I and fire chief will be available to answer any questions you may have. Okay. So let's get going on this, see if I can get this situated. Okay, I'm good. All right, so what is SB 901? It was a law passed back in 2018 in response to recent wildfires. It requires all electric utilities to develop and implement a wildfire mitigation plan that will help reduce electric equipment ignited wildfires in high-fire-risk areas. The plan must address specified requirements listed in SB 901, and then it requires city council or board approval by January 1st, 2020, and annually thereafter. Another requirement, once this plan is approved, it is reviewed by an independent evaluator, and that report will be presented to the council. So, the objectives of the plan, that was one of the requirements. The three broad objectives are minimizing sources of ignition, so that spark that could lead to the wildfire, how we could minimize the possibility of that, making our grid resilient to bad weather, and then wildfire prevention strategies. These all three were discussed in our plan. What are wildfire risks? CPUC in January 2018 adopted this map. This is map of California. As you can see, Tier 2 is... Tier 2 and Tier 3 surround Lompoc. Tier 2 is considered elevated risk, and Tier 3 is extreme risk. And here is where our Tier 2, inside Lompoc, where that lies. It's on the southeast end, on our southwest and south of the city, and up north. So what does it mean for us in hard numbers? Less than 2% of our infrastructure, electrical infrastructure, is in Tier 2. And less than 1% of our total customers fall in that high-fire-threat district that Tier 2, and we deem it to be a limited risk for us. Another planned requirement was to identify roles and responsibilities. Electric developed this plan in conjunction with fire department. City utility commission reviewed the plan, and this plan will work in coordination with the existing Lompoc's comprehensive emergency management plan. Electric staff will implement the plan, and we will use fire department for fire response Some of the wildfire prevention strategies, we're going to do vegetation management. We're looking into strategies of creating a buffer zone around our electrical equipment, so if there was to be a spark, it dies down before it could initiate a wildfire. Enhanced inspections, we do inspections today, but there will be more frequent inspections, especially in the Tier 2 areas. System hardening, we brought some equipment out here. I'll show you in a moment. And then reclosing and de-energization, we'll talk about that after our demo. I would like to call Terry Langi. He is our lead line worker. He's been with us for 32 years. Comes with a lot of experience, so I asked him to show us what he does out in the field.
Thank you, council, and members, and the public being here tonight. Okay, this is our normal insulator with a bare conductor and a tie wire on it. This is in most alleys and everywhere in the city, but in our fire prevention zone that we're mitigating, we're looking to put the conductor cover on the wire and the insulator cover on top of the insulator. So usually, on most scenarios, it's 18 inches apart. It's about that far apart on the arm and the other wires over here in a three-phase scenario. And then Hawk can land on this and get across that, or a critter can crawl up on the arm and get across that. So we're trying to mitigate that. We'll have this on both, and it would cause a fault. And fault current is very high for us, and usually the weakest link on the conductor will cause it to fall on the ground. So usually with that, we have bump splices, and with the bump splice, it's like a Chinese finger, kind of you slide it in on both sides of the wire, and the automatic grabs it on the inside. And when it gets old and rusty with our conditions here with the... From the weather that we have, it falls apart, and it pulls apart, and it ends up on the ground, and that can cause a fire. So we went with the... So we went with the crimper. So we crimped the conductor. It's a six-ton crimper. And we found with this, it keeps the line off the ground. And when there is a fault, this is a part of the problem that falls on the ground. So we can use this to tap the bad spots in the line, or else we can use it for if we install a new pole. And we break the pole, we can extend the conductor, and it's a pull-tension splice. So I didn't finish crimping it, but this is what it looks like. So we'll be using this on anywhere where, like, this wire is extended. We'll be crimping it. Or else, if we have a spot where there's two insulators and the wire's dead end, when we go over the top, we'll be crimping it, and we're using insulated wire also. So everything will be crimped, and pretty much it. Insulated. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And this is part of our system hardening. Again, the idea is we don't want that spark, and this will help us reduce the risk. Can we get the lights, please? Okay, so another requirement of SB 901 was to look into de-energization and then restoration of service, okay? Power shut-off may occur if there is a wildfire risk in the Tier 2 area. We'll work with our Fire Department and other agencies to see if that's the case. At the moment, I don't think we have a very high risk where we will need to do any power shut-offs. But we do have the capability to isolate the customers that are in that tier. If we were to implement that during that timeframe, it will be only the customers in Tier 2 and the Highlands. Unfortunately, the way our grid is set up today, Highlands will be out of power if we were to implement this, and that's less than 2%. Other city services and areas will not be impacted. This is a little different than, or quite a bit different than PG&E's power shut-offs because we bring in power through PG&E's transmission lines. So if they were to implement a power shut-off, the entire city, all our customers will be out of power. In this case, it's less than 2%. And the likelihood of this is very, very low. Also, our restoration time will be much faster as well since our city is under, the Tier 2 is fairly small. We could fairly quickly monitor and restore services. Another requirement was monitoring and auditing of the plan. We identified a couple matrices. One is fire ignitions in, HFTD, wires down, and then we'll calculate the effectiveness of our inspections. If there are any improvements needed, we'll make those improvements. We will contract an independent evaluator to review the plan following the council approval tonight. Well, this concludes my presentation, but I would like to summarize real quick what we discussed tonight. SB 901 law was passed back in 2018 in response to recent wildfires. Requires all electric utilities to develop and implement a wildfire mitigation plan. This plan must address specified requirements listed in SB 901. And tonight, we're seeking city council approval of the plan to be in compliance.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, if we've had until 2018, and this is the last meeting before January 1st, we have to approve this. But who is the independent evaluator? Who's that gonna be? Is it just?
Uh, this will be a contractor. We haven't looked into it yet.
So the council's the only ones that have to be done by January 1st. This contractor can go out for whatever, then?
Uh, correct. And I believe it's, we have till July of next year.
Any more questions for staff before we open it for public comment? Thank you. The floor is now open for public comment on this item. You have three minutes to speak to the issue if you would like to step forward to the podium. Seeing no one rise, I will bring this back to council and entertain discussion or motion. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I want to thank Teagan and Terry. Thank you for your hard work. I know we've had a few glitches, but for the most part, our electric enterprise does very well for itself. You guys are definitely a major bonus for our community. And I think this will answer a lot of questions that people have. I don't know if you've had much public comment or response on this yet. Maybe after approval, you'll hear some more. But the difficulty of amending this, is there easy to amend? Should we need to amend?
Yes, so after council's approval tonight, we will hire an evaluator, and if there are significant changes that are required, we'll definitely make those, yes. And we will bring the results back to the council.
Okay. I get, well, if there's no other questions for that, I'd make the motion to approve the resolution 5292 (19), adopting-
6219.
62. Time for new glasses. Adopting City of Lompoc Wildfire Mitigation Plan.
I'll second.
Give a second.
So we have two seconds. But we'll accept Starbucks and any other discussion before we take a vote. Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Item number 10 is a public hearing review of Planning Commission Recommendations for Development Review Permit, DR 19-04, Investing Aerospace Condominium Map, LOM 616, for a 24-unit residential condominium project at 109 South Third Street, Adoption of Resolutions Number 6295 (19) and 6296 (19). And we have Mr. Greg Stone to present instead of Mr. Halverson, who is on his honeymoon.
Uh, he's getting married today.
There we go.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So tonight, again, we have a review of Planning Commission Recommendation for Development Permit, Investing Aerospace Condominium Map for 24-unit residential condominium project. It is located at 109 South Third Street, real close to the intersection of Ocean and Third. It is a R3 PD Zone property and is surrounded by residential, multifamily residential, and commercial uses like a hotel. Quick background on this project. Back in 2003, there was an approval for a 15-unit residential condo project. And then in 2007, that project was re-approved. However, that project went away. In 2009, another project came along for a 24-unit apartment complex. That one went away, and now we are here today. And this went to Planning Commission in November and was recommended for approval by Planning Commission to City Council. The applicant proposes to construct three two-story buildings totaling approximately 22,000 square feet to accommodate market-rate residential condominiums. Access to the site would be from Third Street. And the project includes various improvements, including landscaping, residential amenities such as a playground, barbecue area, and a small community garden. The parking for the project includes two car garages and also includes four off-street parking spaces, and it meets our parking requirements. This is the map. LOM 616 is proposed to create the 24 residential airspace condominium units, which will also allow the individual condominium units to be sold following map recordation. The elevations, it incorporates a mission architecture style and is complementary to the surrounding buildings. If you're interested, here are the colors and materials I'm holding up. This is a view of the west and east elevation. So the proposal includes a 20% density bonus and one development concession since 10% of the total units will be reserved for low-income households as outlined in the state density bonus law and the General Plan Housing Element Policy 1.1. The applicant is requesting a density bonus to allow three additional residential units and is requesting one concession in order to reduce the minimum open space requirement from 6,000 square feet to 1,800 square feet. Since this is a R3 PD property in the PD Zone, permits, this type of zoning permits flexible design approach to the development. The Planning Commission recommends the city council the requirements and regulations, limitations, and restrictions either more or less restrictive than those elsewhere applied in the city. Therefore, this project in the PD District must be considered with recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council. Utilizing the principles of flexible design approach allows the applicant to increase the percentage of site coverage from 60% to 75% for the project. In addition, the applicant is requesting a reduction in the landscaping from 40% to 25%. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Mosby.
It seems to be asking a lot of reductions. Is this, you know, a bit of the projects that have allowed this much reduction?
I'm not aware. The previous projects, the one I referenced in the background back in 2009, that one did allow for a 70% site coverage. So I'm not sure about 75%, but at least 70.
And a reduction of open space requirement?
That one, I'm not sure.
Like, was the reduction in landscaping?
I wasn't sure what the reduction in landscaping was for the one in 2009, no. I just, I found out that there was a 70% site coverage that was allowed. So it kind of, I would have to do the math to find out what the landscaping would be.
Do they have the same requirements of stormwater percolation and such as?
That's my understanding, yes. For this new project, yes.
So they're gonna, what, permeable parking lot or something?
I don't know if it's permeable or not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cordoba.
If I'm not mistaken, I was present at the Planning Commission meeting when this project was brought forth before that committee or that commission. And if I'm not mistaken, the reason for the reduction, it would be to make the units bigger, or it was because they wanted the units to have more space within. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. The applicant is here, is also, instead of going three stories, is keep it down to two stories, and yes, make the units larger and to utilize more space on the site.
Any more questions for staff or the applicant before we open it for public comment? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Stone. We'll open this for public comment. You have three minutes to speak to this issue.
Mayor, since this is an application by a developer, it might be good to invite the developer to speak first?
No problem. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm the applicant. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to address them. A little history from where I'm coming from. My parents purchased Kimi East, which is on the corner of Cypress and Third Street, back in 1969. And I remember in high school, I'd come up and work on the apartments. And then in 1984, my mother purchased a lot next door, and I designed and built Bihel Paz for my mom, which she still owns. That's 35 years ago. Lots happened between then and now. And then, like, a year or so ago, my wife and father-in-law came up, we went to the San Onofre Valley in Solving. And I said, "Let's go up Premissima," we went there, but it was closed. Says, "Let's go to Lompoc, and I'll show you the project that I did in 1984." So we drove by the site, and I thought this site had been developed years ago, and there's this "for sale" sign on it, and it's like, oh, it's available. And when I was building Bihel Paz in 84, I always looked at that site, and said, "It would be neat to do that," but my parents didn't really want to do it, so. And so I called the broker, and, you know, he said, "He's sure it's for sale." And that's kind of how I got involved in the project, so. You know, it's kind of near and dear to me. I am, my background, I'm an architect and a general contractor. So I, you know, this is what I do. And it's nice to be able to do something that I kind of, you know, grew up with. Because I remember coming here in the 60s and 70s, working the apartments, and now I can, you know, kind of have my own project.
Well, we're very grateful that you found an interest in it and purchased it and have been moving this forward. Any questions for the developer? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And public comment is still open. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Vega.
We're looking the wrong way. Sorry.
Yeah.
For the developer, I was just wondering about the covenants that are involved with the low-income units or the lower-income units that are gonna be required. They're up for sale, correct? They will be up for sale? Oh, they're not. Okay.
I will need you to return to the microphone so we can get it recorded. Thank you.
No, they're, I'm gonna keep it as an apartment project. So we'll have low-income units in there for the people. But I do plan on keeping them. From a financing standpoint, the lender did want to map these condominiums. And in fact, when I did Bihel Paz in 1984, we mapped them as condominiums and kept them as apartments, so.
That's where my question came from, because they were mapped as condominiums, so I wasn't sure. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. For the third time, public comment's now open. Please come forward.
Councilmembers. So this has been a long trail in the project, and I want to fill in a couple of gaps because back in 2012, 2013, and 2014, we actually had three other applicants try to build this project. Two looked at it as apartments, and one came in as condos. The city staff worked really hard to make some changes that would reduce the cost of putting it in. But in the end, none of them could pencil out. One was really close, and we just couldn't cross the line with it. So clearly, what's happened here is a little more density has helped make the project viable. I'm sure we'd like, all like more open space, but we need housing in the city of Lompoc rather desperately, as we all know. And so I hope you'll give it a 5-0 vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, it's really nice to see a little versatility in some use of the land and the density to make it pencil out. I think that we need to, the city should look at many of the infill lots also, similar to what you're doing, to incentivize other people to do the same thing so we can get some things built on these empty lots. So thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this. Resolutions 6295 (19) and 6296 (19). Do we accept this?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you again. Item number 11. Council requests review of commissions and committees with possible modification or elimination of the Economic Development Committee and/or any of the other committees or commissions, and approve of the local appointment list. And we have our city manager, Mr. Troop, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and that subject matter pretty much states what we're gonna be talking about. It is a council request for a review of the commissions and with the possible elimination of the Economic Development Committee and/or any other committees and commissions. And we added on the approval of the local appointments list. Get two birds with one stone kind of a situation. So back in May of 2019, there- So back in May of 2019, there was a request for this review. We're now bringing it forward to the council. There are currently 11 different commissions, committees that are out there. Three other ones are committees that the city council actually is, they sit as the members, but we have those off to the side. We're talking about the 11 that are out there today. In the report, you'll see that we tried to go through and list every single one. We tried to give some data behind it, such as when they were created, how many commissioners sit on them, meeting frequency, start times, number of meetings. So we do, we did the same one for each area. I think it's interesting, the library commission started in 1907. That's our oldest and longest-running one. The purpose of this was for the council to really review and discuss changes, deletions, combinations. It was up for you all to discuss, so I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the approval of the list at the end.
Well, thank you for the thorough report. I was surprised to see how long some of the committees and commissions had been in existence and better understand maybe why they had started and why they still exist, but also look at, from my perspective, how things have changed and what might be a better approach to this. I think that the commissions are important in one light. They do help cultivate potential council members. It gives community members an opportunity to participate in city government, better understand, become a stronger voice for the community. And as many of us up here have had the experience of sitting on one of these committees, potentially build an interest and run for council, so they have a certain intrinsic value. At the same time, I was quite surprised at some of the cost burdens these are causing our departments, and given the limitation in our staff, the limitation in our budget, and some of the agendas not necessarily being very large or being something to address on a regular basis, my first thought is that we might want to consider all but the Planning Commission go to quarterly meetings to help reduce that burden. And it wouldn't be necessarily permit, but we could see how that works. But definitely, going to quarterly meetings means that the burden on the volunteers is reduced, the burden on staff is reduced, the burden on the budget and supporting those is reduced, but it still maintains these committees and commissions as an opportunity for vetting concepts and ideas, bringing concepts forward to the community. So that was my first thought, is that the Planning Commission's required, it's the only one that's required, it's required to meet regularly to make decisions to move quasi-judicial rules issues forward. But all the others are our choice to have them and have them be a part of giving us feedback and participating in the public discourse, but ultimately, council is the ultimate decider of most of these topics. So that's my first thought on it, is reduce all the other committees and commissions to quarterly meetings. Any other thoughts on how to maybe move forward on this? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I would actually concur with you on the quarterly meetings. I think that the commissions all, they all have a benefit to the city moving forward. However, we are in a budgetary crisis. We do have staff reductions, and we do need to value our time a little bit more and staff time. So I think, as you look through the staff report, one of my concerns was, I don't want to devalue or downplay anybody's, you know, participation in these committees, but there's some committees that have had a lot of, there's had a lot of people that have joined and left because they didn't feel like it was important enough or their time was better used somewhere else. One of the committees that I really brought this up about was economic development. I wanted to bring this up because I think it's really important that if you see the cost and you see the amount of public coming through the meetings, it's something we should look at. It is an element of the general plan that we move forward and have an Economic Development Committee, so I don't want to suggest that we eliminate it, but what I'd like to see is a restructure of the committee to follow the direction that was intended to be in the general plan and to assist the city. I think that, aside from, we have it where it's at 22 people, currently, there's 14 people on there, it's a lot to manage for the city. My suggestion would be restructure the committee to be just like any other committee that would be with an appointment from each of the council members, and to move forward with the same element of the general plan, instead of eliminating something that's very important with a different vision, a vision of us moving forward, revenue generation, increasing staff time to do what they were intended to do. So basically, I don't want to take away from what they're doing, because I know they're doing a great job, but I think we can do a little bit better by minimizing instead of eliminating and redirecting and restructuring. So that's basically my two cents on where I think the committee should go.
Councilmember Cordova.
So in general, my opinion is that the commissions and committees give our public the opportunity to participate and have, you know, a representation, and I think taking that away, which I know that's not necessarily what's being said, taking that away, I think, is taking away the opportunity for our public and our residents to participate if they want to. I realize that we lack participation in a lot of our committees and commissions, and sometimes, you know, we've had incidents where some of our committees or commissions, we can't get enough people there to have a quorum. But I also think that that's reflective of the environment that we as a city are running, where there hasn't been really an opportunity to get it out there and get people to that, to the table, to say, to get excited, to say, we want to participate, and everything that we ever talk about is cutting, 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 cutting. So why wouldn't our public want to participate and be part of such an aggressive, in my opinion, you know, route to constantly cut our services and constantly cut things, programs, whatever, that our community can participate in? In particular, I served on the Economic Development Committee for what I believe was almost five years, and I felt, when I joined that committee, that the work was great. I felt that I was a part of something big, that I was helping my community in different aspects. I was on the subcommittee that did the RFQ for the 83 acres up on the hill. I was part of the subcommittee that reviewed the street impact fees and other subcommittees. So it wasn't until about three years into it where, and I could be recalling this differently, but it was, it is my recollection, that council pretty much said, you're creating way too much work for us, and your job is not to give us work, but rather, your job is to speak when spoken to and don't send anything our way. And I always thought that our job was to do recommendation to council, to do the homework for council on some certain things, and be able to provide that recommendation to council. So to be silenced the way that I felt that I was while I was serving that committee was, for me, something that really disheartened me. And even though I stayed on the committee to fight for, in my opinion, as a volunteer, to fight for the people that were there, I felt really disrespected by it. So if we're going to restructure it, I just hope that there isn't a threat on our council at all or through our city hall that, whether it's the Economic Development Committee or any committee, that it breeds people in our community that want to participate. I hope that that is not the threat and that is not the fear.
So having been initially appointed to the very first revamp of the Economic Development Committee back in 2012, the original 15-member appointments were recommended as representation from the industries in our community. So the goal was to have someone from the real estate industry, someone from the manufacturing industry, someone from the base, someone from the school district, someone from the community college, someone from agriculture, someone who's a developer. It was a very, it's a list that you can refer to as a recommended through a CalEd report that was given to the city. And the original 15 members were very diverse, and I could see reducing it back to the 15 members and eliminating the associates and eliminating the need for the executive board to meet monthly and just have the committee, as the handbook says, that it shall meet a minimum of four times a year, and just say that it will meet four times a year. And I think what is important about keeping it at at least maybe that 15 member is the idea that it was supposed to represent various industries in the community. And maybe what we need to do is step back and look and see what those industries are now and better assess for those vacant positions what industries are missing, and definitely make sure they're on it and able to come to the table. So if we eliminated the associate positions, there are three associate members that could immediately fill the vacant positions that are general, and then there are the three positions from three of the council members that are open that would need to be appointed. So while I understand some frustration from council about it having grown in size, part of it was trying to identify and represent the businesses and the industries in the community and have them present. So I can understand it, having gotten a little large and feeling a little cumbersome, but I would like to see that we still have the local industries represented, still have those voices, still be able to check in with them, so, you know, I would look for maybe taking it back down to 15 members and eliminating the executive committee meeting times and giving that a try, and see if returning it to the smaller size and trying to update the membership according to some of the newer industries that exist, some of the changes that are happening in our community, might reinvigorate the group, so. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I've seen many, many, many people in my appointees also going through the Economic Development Committee, and the layers of authority that were created within that one committee has alienated many of the people that were appointed by council or that have joined and have left, their kids with babysitters, or however they spent their time. And many of them decided to move on. They sat there, and they weren't involved in many of the upper layers of decision-making because everything went to a strategic planning area, and I thought that as a committee or commission, they kind of created their own little city council. So basically, to be honest with you, it was never attached to the city council, it was attached to the Economic Development Department, and it was actually run by the Economic Development slash Assistant Manager. So many times, what was said to us, if we want to know what's going on, we need to attend the meetings, which is a true story for any committee or commission. My own, my own thought process on what an Economic Development Committee could accomplish, which is, which is a lot, they're very important, but it got so large, it was unmanageable. The people with a quorum, we, right now, if you look at the meetings that are important, I see people out there. If you look at here, how many meetings have been canceled because of lack of quorum, it's because of the size of the committee. There weren't enough people to provide a quorum. So basically, what is economic development? Okay? What we, what maybe, in my thought process, what we should have, instead of an Economic Development Director, we should have a business development coordinator, somebody that actually is out there fishing for the city. I think that we should have somebody that should provide business assistance and attract new industries and employees to our limited areas in the form of business plan assistance. I think that social media marketing, streamlined permitting for non-impactful projects are very important. Staff should have additional training from which to communicate with the business requirements that are required for the business owners to come to the counter. I think all of this can be facilitated and helped within. There's many things that we can do to help the commissioners and the committee members that are here, but I think it's too large, I think it went a different direction than was intended. Actually, it's part of an element of the general plan that was put into the general, to the general plan as an element that was required moving forward, but I think the intent was good. I just think it just got a little bit too large to be managed, and obviously, there wasn't enough attendance. So if we can bring it back down to a manageable size as we move forward, as you can see, there's a cost to having these meetings. That's one of the reasons we're addressing each and one of these commission meetings, because it's not free.
Any more discussions, thoughts, before we open it for public comment? Councilmember Cordova.
I just think it's interesting that we can say now that it's work that can be done in-house when we've eliminated everybody in that position and that department.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, and that comment here is with staff as a reduction. It was staff recommended that the budget be solved the way we did it, but in the future and the rhetoric that's here is always, we need more staff, we need more staff. That's what we're working toward, to put staff members in there that can do this, because the committee members as volunteers with zero to no budget cannot do anything by themselves. So basically, what we have to do is make everything manageable, everything with a direction, everything to be goal-oriented so that we know what we're looking for and what we're trying to attract. Lompoc is a small community, and I do have a few notes here that says, making the distinction between growth and investment. I have not all communities are necessarily growing, however, in most cases, businesses, individuals, and/or public agencies continue to make investments, or public agencies continue to make investments in the community, even during periods of population decline. Building ongoing investments rather than growth, as defined by increasing employment or population or tax base, is essential to reinvigorate a struggling economy. Visible improvements, which is what we're striving to do, will spur investments. Returning existing businesses are the foundation of any economic growth strategy. By building on what already exists, city can support current businesses and create a strong foundation on which to attract new businesses, residents, and employments. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open the floor for public comment. You have three minutes to speak to the issue.
So I leave the Economic Development Committee to you. I think it serves a valuable function. If it isn't serving the function the way you want it to serve it, then decide how to fix it. I want to speak about the Utility Commission specifically. The Utility Commission, like the Planning Commission, has some very specific duties outlined in the council handbook, and going to four times a year would probably make it very difficult. We also have, on average, three agenda items, sometimes as many as six, and as you're seeing tonight, we probably wouldn't want to have 15 agenda items on a quarterly meeting. If we do not have business, which happens one or two times a year on average, the utility director contacts our chairman, and the meeting is canceled, so there would be, there's no cost at that point. In addition to the three agenda items that we complete each meeting, we also generally have two or three that we're working on going forward that require a series of meetings to complete. The other thing that I think the commission does is that we're out in the community and people constantly ask us questions, well, what about this, what about that? And we bring issues back to the city staff that would otherwise probably come to this council and take up your time. The other thing that's different is unlike all the other commissions, there are no general fund dollars to fund the Utility Commission. We're funded through the various utilities in the city. Just with the commissions in general, I think the council would do well to respect the volunteers on all those committees and commissions and ask them their opinion on what they think they should do and if they need to reduce their time, rather than having a top-down decision. I attended a meeting of the Public Safety Commission in this chamber a short time ago, and there were 100-plus people here, and they were asking for exactly the opposite. They meet quarterly, and they were asking to meet more often. Now, I noticed there are some commissions on here that don't transact much business and cancel a lot of meetings, and, you know, meeting quarterly might be a good thing for them, but I believe we need to respect our volunteers and ask them for their opinion before an action is taken. The Economic Development Committee is another problem, and I... And I, Mr. Starbuck and I worked very hard to create that, but sometimes the plan that you start with doesn't work out too well. And we've certainly seen some growing pains. So perhaps the five of you can get together and determine a more efficient way to operate that committee. Thank you.
Brendan Bridge resident. I appreciate this item coming up. It gave me a chance to hear John say he thought the Utility Commission was the best, but I'm going to vote for the Parks and Rec. But to Gilda's point, I think a challenge we have is the value of the word and the participation that is given upon that seat. And so you're absolutely right. We give our kids to babysitters and we come in and we think we're doing good. And it feels good for a while, but ultimately, we get deceived in some ways. We get told one thing and we have to go chase another. We find resolutions that say this and actions that say that. And I've been in probably five meetings and I think my only, one of the only residents here is our lovely councilwoman. So it is disheartening to put in a lot of effort, but let's also balance that commissions versus committees because those are drastically different. And I think we have one animal here that nobody really wants to just separate and go, it's not something we want anymore. It feels good, it sounds good, but there is just no movement, there's no momentum, there's no power, which ultimately is a bad word in of itself. But that's what we need to bestow upon the people amongst those committees and those commissions. So the public safety, if they feel they need to meet more, let them. If another one wants to meet less, let them. But while it is ultimately your role and responsibility to guide those, and if economics can't be the primary thing, then it is your responsibility to bring that up and go, let's bring it down to size, let's refocus it. But let's also just remember that we're trying to benefit the people that are volunteering. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Howard, a long time, not a long time, but a resident of Lompoc. It's sounding to me like it's time that this whole commission-committee issue is revisited by Lompoc. And my suggestion is that you begin to look at what you want these commissions and committees to do. That means you determine what their goals are and then figure out how to do it. And one way to do that is to utilize the leaders of these commissions and committees, get them together and to work on this. You know, there are a lot of people who would work on goals, and then you figure out how you're going to meet them. And you value it yourself. I mean, that's what you do, I hope, as councilmembers, is figure out, are you doing what you're supposed to be doing and what you were elected for? Get people in the community to work on this. You're struggling and the people on the commissions are struggling. Involve them, get them interested. Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. There's no possible way, possible way that each and every one of you would be able to attend each and every meeting or really visit in depth every single issue. A lot of the work that the commissions can do is that you can send a clear message of what you would like to see accomplished. And the original ten, at least like on the Planning Commission, is to get advisory and input from a commission so that you're not having to vet out every single item that comes up. So properly used, the commission will help you vet out quite a bit, gives the community a first look at tackling and suggesting resolution, problem solving, allows a community to take a particular issue, go through it and give you a recommendation. That saves a substantial amount of time for the council. And as a volunteer council, I just don't think there's enough hours in the day for you to visit everything that the residents have concern about, and that's what the intended purpose and how a commission can be used successfully to allow you to delegate that to the commissions and bring you back recommendations. Ultimately, you are the policymakers, so you will decide on what happens, but at least a lot could be vetted before it comes on your table and you're not taking multiple meetings in the council to vet these issues out. Attendance is largely due to the efforts that the city has made. Previous speaker stated that there was approximately a hundred people in attendance at a Public Safety Commission. I am very surprised that while you had a public information officer, I did not see on a regular basis commission meetings put on anywhere other than with the minimal requirement of the law. Shame on you. Meeting the minimal requirement is great, but if you really want participation, don't get up and talk about participation, but do nothing but the minimal required outreach to the public. In any way, shape or form that you can promote these meetings and get the public participation. That was done a month ago or so, and the public responded when they were aware that there was a channel for them to voice their concerns and their issues. So with a little bit more than the minimum required by law, I believe you'll get more participation and be able to vet more issues. I really think that government exists for the benefit of the residents. And whether it's one time a year that a resident has an issue and is able to go and express their concern or a hundred times a year, that outlet should be available to them. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mark Moschella. I chair the Human Services Commission, and I, right now, we're in our workshop for the CDBG funding, and we just appreciate what you guys have done and how you support us. And I think we also put in our quality volunteer time to support our community. And I think it's important that the commissions continue to be involved. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Guinega. I'm also a Public Safety Commissioner. I think commissions are very important. And I'll give, I've been a Public Safety Commissioner for five years. And I'll be honest, I just got thrown in. No one really told me what it was, you know, what the training behind it. Until one day I looked at the manual and I said, wait a minute, we have goals and we have certain duties to do here. And it took a while for even for me to say, hey, I want to make sure we follow what we are meant to do, what the book says to do. I think a lot of the problems with these commissions is I don't think they, I bet a lot of them haven't even read the book and what their goals are. But I can tell you that I personally have made it an effort to educate the community about what the Public Safety Commission does, what other commissions do. And the public's like, wow, we were not aware of it. Now that we are aware of it, we want to participate. Last Public Safety meeting we had, over a hundred people showed up because I made an effort to call people in this community and said, hey, this is what this commission's about, this is what we're here for, and your input is needed. So I think with every commission, like even with you as city council or any organization, if you have people who truly have the passion to serve in these commissions and make a difference, and the most important thing is engage the public, the residents, because that's the only way that you up here are going to know what's happening in our community. And we all come from different backgrounds, we all have different contacts throughout the community. And the beauty about commissions is that you have a diverse group of people serving in these commissions, therefore able to give different inputs. And I think that's very important. And also to bring up, you know, the good and the bad of what's happening in our community and making you aware of it. Because like I have said, even with public safety, and I mentioned it in my last, in the last Public Safety meeting, how many of my Public Safety Commissioners have gone to these, you know, F Street, D Street, L Street? When was the last time any of them, you know, walked those neighborhoods to talk to people and find out? I did. I went, I had a meeting at College Park Apartments. We had about fifteen people show up, and they were so excited and they want more. And they said, when's the next meeting? One thing that it has become an issue is we do have many residents that speak Spanish only, and they would like to be able to attend some of these meetings and be able to understand. So just something for you guys to be aware. Thank you.
Hank Alina, a long time resident in Lompoc. I've been sitting here listening and so forth, and I thought, should I come up and say something or shouldn't I? There is something being planned, and the idea came from the Economic Development Committee. And the thing was a summit meeting to be held next year. And the title of the summit meeting is the Lompoc Miracle. And that miracle starts off with, there are two rivers in Lompoc. One is the San Yanez River, and the other is a very wide river. It's very hard to see between the city of Lompoc and the Lompoc Unified School District. I was with the school district for thirty-eight years, and now I've been on the Economic Development Committee for about three, four years. The summit meeting is to bring the two organizations together. We heard a lot about economics and a lot about planning and so forth. And the example I use, that I'm a new person, family man, just got a job at Mannenberg Air Force Base. I have some children. And two questions that all cities, not just Lompoc, usually is asked, what is the housing? And the housing is starting a little bit. And the other is, what is the school district like? We have a problem in both of them. And that summit meeting, there's a meeting coming up on January tenth of what I call a resource committee, which is a very diverse committee of educators. Every one of you sitting on that dais has been invited. I've talked to, I've talked to four. One one has not responded to me. Right, sir? And so that summit meeting can produce, because we're talking about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty community people from all different districts in the community to come together to help the city and help the school district, and coming together as one. I think this is the sweatshirt that I'm wearing, the symbol on this sweatshirt of these helping stuff. But that all started, the idea started from the Economic Development Committee and stuff. So I'm hoping that this continues to work with it. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment. So after listening to public comment and listening to some of the feedback, rather than making an immediate decision tonight, what I'd like to consider is forming an ad hoc with two of the council members and then inviting the chair and vice chairs of each of the committees and commissions to sit down and meet with the ad hoc after meeting with their committees and commissions to get feedback and better determine a recommendation that we could bring back as an update to each of the committee and commissions to help them refocus and have us refocus them to accomplish some of the support work they can do, provide that public feedback as well as that support network that they are. So that's my current recommendation. I'll pull back my original discussion points, recommend an ad hoc, again, of two council members that then hold a determine, we can as ad hoc determine if we could do a couple of the smaller committees in a single meeting with, say, like the Senior Commission and the Youth Commission, kind of look at ones that might combine, some of the larger ones having a meeting focused on that with the chair and the vice chair bringing back the feedback and assigning each of those committees and commissions at their January or February meetings to have that discussion on their agenda in order to bring that back to the ad hoc. Councilmember Mosby.
I think the council needs to remember that engage your commissioners. I talk to my commissioners, most of them weekly, if not more often than that. And they're able to do things that I don't have the time to do, and they can answer questions for me, staying engaged. Three of my commissioners are here tonight. I'll probably have phone calls from two more of them tonight, probably listening to the meetings. But it gives us an opportunity to do more things. Plus it frees up staff, having those meetings. We don't have to engage with staff, which is another item that should be down here. Staff are meeting at these commissions meetings and committee meetings, and they're not having to sit down one-on-ones with each one of us because they're able to get it out there on the table. I think it's also important, when you saw the Public Safety Commission meeting with well over a hundred people, but I've seen Utility Commission meetings when you get twenty to thirty people show up when there is an issue. The Del Norte Trailer Park incident was one of them. But if you didn't have something already in place and ready to engage the public, what would you do? You know, you'd try to backtrack in panic at that time. And it also frees up a lot of staff at the counter inside, that the public is able to go to these meetings and get their questions answered. And one of the reasons why we see the numbers down the way they are in some of the reporting here is it wasn't until recently, this council has brought most of these meetings to this dais here, to the council chambers. The Public Safety Commission meeting used to be a difficult one to find. It used to be in the back room at Station One and alternated, be upstairs at the police station. Very difficult to find. The Utility Commission meeting used to be in a back room here at City Hall. It was almost impossible for the public to even find that meeting. Airport Commission meeting is in a little building out at the airport, brought it back to this, to the council chambers. Park Commission meeting used to be upstairs at the Anderson Rec. I've been in that one, where there'd be ten or fifteen people, and there'd be a hundred and ten degrees in that little tiny room. So I think we have done a lot to try to bring this forward, to bring them centralized here at City Hall so people can even find them. Can we be, do better engaging? But I know when, we can, but I know when my Public Safety Commissioner left, but when needed to step up, they were able to bring that many people to the table who were interested to be here. I don't know how many, a couple of us were there, but it was a very passionate, well-attended meeting that helped answer some of the questions the public had. I wouldn't say that these commissions are burdens on city staff. I think if you actually looked at it, you're shortening the time to city staff because you have commissioners that then go out to the public and answer the questions. I think if you didn't have them, you would be probably spending more staff time answering questions to the public. The councilmembers think they need to go down quarterly, I would challenge them to spend more time with their commissioners and engage and to see. Maybe some councilmembers don't care about the tough questions that are asked. But I know that the Utility Commission meeting, that's our public utility commission meeting. So we're seeing eighty million dollars, a couple hundred million dollars worth of assets and advising to us. And that's very important. And I know if the public had an issue, that's the platform for the public. Where would they be? They could be at the microphone, and we could get along extended. If those hundred-plus people at the Public Safety Commission lined up here, I think you'd increase the staff time, and you'd probably have to have a second council meeting to answer to those people.
Councilmember Vega.
Thank you for all your comments, Mayor. I'd like to make a kind of a different kind of a suggestion here. There's no disrespect meant or any devaluation of the people's time here when we bring this up. It's basically something that's been on a lot of people's mind, wondering what the cost is and the time and how many people have gone through these commissions or committees and maybe thought their time wasn't as valuable. So as far as the Economic Development Committee, I see we have quality people here that have volunteered and are looking to move Lompoc forward. So a suggestion here, Mayor-
So a suggestion here, Mayor, as you suggested about the restructuring is possible, you talked about the original 15, but I see 14 people here, okay? I see 14 people, and I think that, I mean, it shows that there's, on this thing, it shows 14, unless I'm wrong here, on this report, just currently 14 members.
There's actually 12 active members, and there is the representation from the Visit Lompoc, which is Explore Lompoc, and a vacant position from the chamber. Those were, they're not voting members, they're there to participate in the conversation and bring in for information.
So it's not involved in the mail?
So, so they're not typically counted as part of making the quorum. They're there to provide information and feedback from those two entities that are contributing to economic drivers. So what I was saying is, on that list, you see there's three vacant positions that aren't assigned to councilmembers, and there's three associates. So if we eliminated the associates and moved those three up into those vacant positions, there would only be the three vacant positions from three of the councilmembers that needed to be filled, returning it to that original 15 members, and see if it works.
Sorry. And the eight vacancies is, it's because, it's a mix of the people that are, that are there. Is that correct?
So the idea originally from the recommendation from the CAL ED report was to identify, and they did, and this is, this report's over 20 years old, so we had identified 15 dominant entities or industries, and recommended representation from each of that. I would say we ask the Economic Development Committee to self-assess and see what some of the newer industries are, what some of the industries may have changed, and see who currently represents those, and see if they couldn't identify new members to come back and recommend to be appointed that might represent new industry, like the tech industry or the cannabis industry, some of the newer industries that have evolved that weren't there as part of the original CAL ED. But that is something I think we could leave to the Economic Committee to do.
So the restructuring, based on the amount of people here, I think it needs to be downsized, okay, would be my suggestion, as it was your suggestion, to where it's manageable. The structure of it, I would say that we need to take a look at it, because, you know, it may not be the same as needed, you know, where we were requiring somebody from every industry. You know, half of the battle here, I guess, is we want people that want to be engaged, okay? We shouldn't have to go off and have to hook a fish, so to speak, to be in the committee, and then they only last a little while, you know? They're all quality people. But I think that half of being a part of a board, or a committee, or commission, is you have to feel engaged. If you don't feel any value, you're not going to stay with it, okay? You're not going to do your best work. And then what happens is, the layers of authority that are on the economic development that have been developed, I'm not saying anything's negative there, but I've heard from some of the people that are coming as associates, they're just sitting there at the table, and, and it doesn't take them very long to be disillusioned and feel they don't have an equal say-so. So my suggestion would be to remove those layers of authority, so that we have a chairperson, and maybe put a little bit more value on each individual instead of the layers of what's perceived as authority, where some of these people may come in, and they may have some input, but they're afraid to say anything, because it's just a thought, Mayor, okay? Maybe you have another suggestion to where we could do that. But I would love us to be open to restructuring a little bit, because I look at the players here, and I look at them all being quality. I know what I said, but the idea was to make it more manageable, okay? And to make sure that we're not fighting over a lack of quorum. As you can see from these reports, many meetings have been canceled. So, you know, we need to take a look at that, okay? Canceled meetings are not conducive to moving forward and building an economic base. We need to make sure that we have meetings that are attended, if it's quarterly, or if it's bimonthly, or whatever we have to do. We have to make sure that people look forward to coming through there with ideas and bring that value to the table. You know, I think it's neat to be a part of a group. I've been part of a committee and a commission myself, and I was very proud in the beginning, okay? And if you don't feel engaged, or you don't have the time, you're not going to come back, because remember, it's volunteerism. So it's one of my suggestions here.
The easiest thing for the Economic Development Committee right now, to not invalidate any of the current membership, would be to eliminate all the associate positions, eliminate the three vacant positions, allow you, Councilmember Mosby and Councilmember Starbuck, to accept the three associates that are currently serving as your appointees, making it a 12-member committee, and moving it to four meetings a year for now, and a vice chair and a chair elected out of that.
Do I get to meet them?
You, you're more than welcome to, as awaited. I'm just saying, it means you don't have to recruit membership, it means you don't have to identify, you can pick which, which of the three you'd like to appoint, if you like. But it does solve the problem without dismissing any of the members serving.
Okay. The other point is, since we're all up here trying to figure out how to make it more valuable, more conducive, we do, we have agreed, and I agree, we need some sort of economic development moving forward. We need to have some sort of hope that we're trying to make Lompoc better and more viable and more saleable, okay? We need the revenue, we want the people, we want the fun. The millennials are coming, guys, you know, and they want to have some fun, they want to hear some music, they want to know that there's some vibrant stuff going on in Lompoc that they just don't have to go to Santa Barbara. So we need to, moving forward would be the fact that we have a, it has been disconnected from council, Mayor, as you know, because it was a different structure before. So I'd like us to just be real about the structure, not that there's any authority. I would like it to actually be an extension of council, because we do not, we no longer have the Economic Development Director that we had, now it's Community Development. There hasn't been a structure change, and I want to make sure that if we have a committee or commission, as you know, it's been a little bit separate, we need to make sure that we bring it back to council, so that everybody feels like, as you mentioned, if we were to accept these associate members as part of council, we want them to make sure they're connected with council. I think that that would build some value also, and, and, and invigorate, and invite participation.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm just going to make a couple of real quick comments here. Councilmember Mosby had addressed meetings and locations. We've been up here, we've kicked that horse down the road a bunch. Well, it, it didn't really change but a couple of them. We still list our commissions at the airport, the Weas Community Center, here in City Hall in majority, Anderson Rec Center, and the library. So again, we have, if you want to go to a commission meeting, you've got to be very efficient at looking where it is, so you go to the right spot. I think the ad hoc might not be a bad idea. I'm not going to be on it, but I think that it might not be a bad idea, because each commission has a chair, and they have members on it. It would be a way to kind of get the input from everybody. The council commission handbook does list the responsibilities and what is required of all of these committees and commissions. So I mean, we're, we don't want to go regress back into that, I don't think we need to review any of that. There probably isn't an issue with public noticing, because I get the notice. I have commission and committees I have to go to sit at, but I get it. Nobody else does. How are you aware? I don't know if they're on website, I don't know if they're on Facebook, but how, how do people find out? You know, it's, maybe more effort could be put into that. One of the things about meeting further apart, there are certain times, I'll use the Human Services Commission as an example. Oftentimes during the year, there's not much movement with the Human Services Commission. And then all of a sudden, when we have the CDBG allotments, et cetera, that come out, there's meetings frequently. Planning commissions had special meetings. I mean, there's always the ability to agenda a meeting and have it. So if you wanted to space them a little bit, depending on what the commission's doing, you can still have a meeting. I'm going to tell you, one of the other issues as a council member, finding somebody to sit on some of these committees and commissions. I appointed somebody a few months ago, and they haven't made three meetings. So it's time to say sorry, and I have to go look again. It doesn't seem as though there's a lot of community involvement or people standing in line. Some of my other commissioners have found me commissioners. It's, so I mean, the public is, wants to be, but how do they know? The Economic Development Committee, I'm going to just throw this out there as a quick little history lesson. Early 2011, when I was first elected, council workshops, I brought up an idea, why don't we have a five-member Economic Development Commission? And it became a 23-person appointment, we brought in CAL ED, and this, it became an unmanaged, like herding cats is how I wanted to say. And the animosity, I don't think should be there. I'd, I'd really like to sit down with the Economic Development Committee in a pre-council meeting possibly, and say, you had goals, you have objectives, what are you doing? Where are we at with that, before we go chopping, hacking, and doing other things? Because we haven't met with them this year, nor will we till next year. So maybe some of these commissions that we have questions with, we could do a pre-meeting like we do every other year. So, just wanted to throw it out.
Councilmember Cordova.
Oh, by the way, I would serve on an ad hoc, I suggested, you know? I, I'd be willing to serve on the ad hoc, since I suggested, but, uh huh. Councilmember Cordova.
So I would be in support of having an ad hoc committee to go back and actually speak and sit down with the chairs, or, you know, of these committees and commissions, to get their input, to get their opinion. I think that educating is how we're going to be able to engage people. It's not the first time that I've said it. From the beginning, I've said, that's the only way we're going to get community involvement, is if we start educating our residents. I do think that Lompoc is at a, at a crossroads, and I think that it's our responsibility to steer vision, and to steer planning, and to steer commitment primarily, and we will see people follow and, and, and support that. I think when things have happened, as Councilmember Mosby said, when things have happened, people do come out, because that's of interest to them, because maybe it's, it's pushed by a committee member, you know, show up, because your voice needs to be heard, and so that's very important. We'll, I think that we will see that outcome. I will volunteer to sit on a subcommittee, because I feel that there's value, and I think also to Councilmember Mosby's point, is the more engaged we are with our commissioners, I will be the first one to say, I've been trying to attend as many commission meetings as I can, just so that I can learn, and I can understand, being a new council member, what is going on at some of these commissions and committees. And there's some that I haven't had the opportunity to attend, and there's some commissioners that I don't worry about, because I know that they're passionate, and they're serving every, they're serving their purpose. And then there's some that I do feel like I have to help them do the homework, because they're, they're serving, and I offered to help if, if they would represent me on that commission and committee. So the commitment has to be there from us, to our commissions, to our commissioners. So I would support that, and I would volunteer as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
To Councilman Starbuck's comment about chopping and hacking, I think we came to a pretty good little conversation here about not chopping and hacking and alienating anybody on the Economic Development Committee. I think it was, all with respect, unless you're resistant to any change, many of the comments that I've been told is, many of the council meetings that we do, we sometimes just spin our wheels and don't move anything forward, everything goes back to an ad hoc committee, everything gets changed, because we're afraid to make some sort of a decision. I think that the comments and the conversation that the mayor and I had were pretty conducive. We're not trying to chop and hack, we're trying to downsize. And then after that, you can have your ad hoc committee, but a lot of thing, times, we need to change it to whatever the size is. On the Economic Development Committee, Councilman Starbuck, I would say that there's no reason not to change the number to the existing membership, because as you can see, the vacancies are there, it shows the number of cancellations that are there. So why don't we at least make some sort of decision to move something forward, and then we include the existing members of the Economic Development Committee in the ad hoc committee moving forward? We're not alienating anyone, that's the largest committee. You just stated that it was too large to manage, so why can't we make one little simple decision and move forward with an ad hoc committee? And I'm in favor of that, is my question.
Councilmember Vega, would you be willing to allow this to go back to the Economic Development Committee to ask its members if they would all like to still serve, and make sure they all still want to serve as part of that ad hoc round? This is a concept we've put forward, and if all of the members that currently exist want to remain, this is the way to remain on it. But that if anyone does want to step down, that might be another way to reduce the amount, and give it a chance to go back and get feedback from them.
And you know, I appreciate your comments, yes, of course. My, I'm trying to work and be a little bit more pliable and work with everybody. I'm listening to your comments, with all due respect. But again, the reason I referenced Councilman Starbuck is I know he means well, and he wants things to happen, but the hacking and reducing, that's not what was said, so he's taking that out of context. And I think moving forward and making a decision here is what we're here for. It's like we do what we say the city always does, is we always have to hire a consultant before we make a decision, but we aren't willing to do it ourselves. So we need to lead by example, and it's very simple.
And I absolutely respect that, but I think it's an opportunity, given some of the feedback, that we have this idea of how to approach a solution, but think, giving it back to the Economic Development Committee in January to give us the feedback on the membership would be a balance of both, if you're okay with that.
I'm okay with that, Mayor, but the only thing that I don't want us to do is go and recruit people in the meantime for that, and give them the false illusion that they're on, and they're not on.
Totally understood.
I think that's disrespectful.
Totally understood.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
I, I would volunteer to be on the ad hoc committee.
All right. So we have three volunteers to be on the ad hoc committee, and we can only have two. The initial volunteers were for myself and Councilmember Cordova, so if, I can bow out. It, it doesn't matter to me, I need to know who really wants to serve on this.
I will bow out.
Okay. All right. So it's myself and Councilmember Mosby will be the ad hoc committee, and we will ask our current chairs and vice chairs, depending on the committee size, to speak with their January, and for those that don't meet in January, for those that have their first meeting in February, which is the senior commission, if it meets at all, because it currently doesn't have any members? Yes. To add to their agenda, to provide us feedback, and we'll start our ad hocks in February, and put together a schedule to meet with them.
So, because I work with calendars all the time, and we have joint meetings that happen this year, this coming year, 2020, I would appreciate your meetings happen quickly.
Yes.
Because I can't put a calendar together for the joint meetings until you have made a decision about what committees stay, or what the change is. We also need to vote on the local appointments list? So if there's any changes to that, that needs to happen tonight, too.
Okay. I don't believe that any changes need to happen at the moment, other than not filling any vacant positions on the, on the Economic Development Committee, per Councilmember Vega's request. The second part to that is just verifying that those members are the current members, so we need to vote to verify that, is what you're saying? Or doesn't have to happen, because that's the current membership?
The, Mayor, the local appointments list is just a list of the committees and the people serving on them currently, that needs to be approved by the end of the year, so.
Okay. So it has to be reapproved? Okay.
And if the council makes changes to that through this ad hoc committee process, then we'll amend this list later.
Okay.
So a motion to create the ad hoc committee, and then approve the local appointments list, is what it sounds like.
Is what is needed. Okay. And to your point, I completely respect that we need to have our joint meetings in 2020, so that's why I request that all the January meetings for the committees and commissions give us their feedback as soon as possible, and we can begin meeting with them as the ad hoc, right after they've had their monthly meeting, and potentially get it done sooner than February. Does that make sense?
And the body that does not have any members, what do you want to do about that?
The senior commission, correct? Is that the only one?
Haven't met since 2017, I believe.
So how does the council feel about the senior commission, or should we check in with staff? Councilmember Vega.
I think we need to make a decision sometimes. When you have people that haven't met, I don't think there's anything wrong with making a business decision and saying that, since they haven't met, maybe there's lost, lost interest, but I'm open to any suggestion there, but I think we should probably make some sort of a decision here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, be as it were, the two seniors on this, this thing, I would say that probably wouldn't be a bad commission to go ahead and get rid of if they haven't met since 2017.
Yeah. I'd second that one.
And just notice the fact that we've inherited the mobile home rent stabilization, we've inherited the park and pool assessment committee as a council, so you have to get rid of one that hasn't been used. I, I'll give you a second on that one.
Thank you. Is that moving forward, since I just told you all everything that I did?
Are you having a senior moment?
I'm having a senior moment. I said, hey, we're spinning our wheels. Anyway, also have a have another comment, Mayor. I'm not sure who has the floor right now.
You currently still have?
Okay. So basically with the, another thought here, I'm off of economic development now, okay? As we have our ad hoc committee, there have been commissioners and committee members that noted it'll come out during your meetings. They want to adjust their meeting times. And again, it was brought up again about any committees that can be consolidated. Not sure. We've been told no, but there was a committee member that was on beautification that asked me if there's any way of putting anybody else on there that was kind of, whether it was, or if parks and urban forestry, or if beautification, any of those things can be, they're related. We've been told that it can't happen because the department heads have a line in the sand, so to speak. But it was brought up by two commissioners to me, at least to take a look at it. Okay, these other options. I'm not sure. Maybe the city manager, I'm not sure if you have any input on that.
I would thank you, Mayor and Council. I was just going to say that the line in the sand, don't worry about that. I will, if you decide to combine, say, two commissions into one, the staff will definitely work.
And thank you, because that was asked before, and we were told maybe we couldn't do it because maybe they weren't interacting, they're two different departments. So it sounds like there's some positive feedback there, and it may provide some energy within the commission meetings if you have a couple of entities that are moving forward for the same purpose.
Right.
So thank you.
So for clarity, and our city clerk, our motion is to have an ad hoc committee of Councilmember Mosby and myself that will meet over the month of January after each of the committees and commissions have met and provided feedback, arranged meetings with the chairs and vice chairs, to provide us feedback so we can make recommendations and bring it back to council, and confirm the list of current appointees as the continued appointees and eliminate the senior commission.
And what do you want those boards or those bodies to have on their agenda? What is it that you want them to bring back to you for their, after their January meeting? Now, after their January meeting, you need to know that the youth commission doesn't meet until the 27th of January. So you want to wait till everybody meets, or do you want to meet with them before, as soon as possible? Again, it's just, my calendar is out there, and I don't like it not being approved, so.
I would say that Councilmember Mosby and I should get together and try and meet with the chairs and vice chairs as soon as possible after their January meeting, and the youth commission probably will just be the last group we meet with early in February, since they do meet so late.
So in all reality, just, this doesn't matter, I suppose, but in all reality, the joint meetings won't start till about March, maybe April?
Yeah. All right. Any other questions or concerns regarding the motion? All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. As consent calendar notes, it will happen after written communications and before oral communications. So now we will go back to item six. Item six is consideration of the Planning Commission recommendation for approval of the comprehensive zoning code update to Title 17 of the Lompoc Municipal Code, adoption of Resolution Number 625819, second reading of the ordinance number 167019, and adoption of an addendum to the 2030 General Plan Environmental Impact Report. And Councilmember Mosby, you pulled this item, so please share as to why.
The other night, I went through the book, just double checking on some things. Most of the stuff I found was house cleaning items, things that we had done. I ran them by the city attorney already. I have eight items, roughly, that some were simple things like lining up the proper letters. They started at G instead of A in some of them. I do have it typed up. Didn't have copies for everybody. I just ran it by the city attorney, but I crossed out one of the items that the city attorney said was a no-go on here, which is item 8A. So it's crossed out on that. But give them to you guys.
Mayor, can we wait just a second until the city clerk comes back with some copies?
We can do that. I also am aware that we can't go silent too long on the microphone before it stops recording. So.
Christmas caroling, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
You start.
No. No one will stay.
Dean's got a good voice.
Come on, Dean.
Dean's the mayor.
Not unless you want your ears to hurt.
It's one class I failed was singing.
Do we have to wait till she gets?
Oh, yeah. Victor likes to sing.
We'll have the copies for the public, but I guess if we proceed.
We should probably go ahead and begin the discussion, and then we'll have to open it for public comment. So at that point, I'm hopeful that the community will have the copies. So Councilmember Mosby, why don't you go ahead and begin?
Okay. Try to make it as simple as possible in this complex book by giving both the page number and the item number, so they can follow along if you want to. But the first one was a cleanup from September 7, 2018, Planning Commission meeting on an item that was agreed to be added in, but didn't make it in there. There's a blank in the book still, but it was about putting the compact space dimension diagram in the book. It has the automotive spaces, the normal size, but it was to put the compact spaces in. So this is, sorry, Councilmember Mosby, so this is a table in the zoning code update that has some requirements for parking lots, and the Planning Commission had recommended that you put in the dimensions for compact parking lot spaces, and that just didn't make it in. Right. Okay. Then on September 10, 2018, there was an item of conflict that comes about, that was agreed to, that did happen. And that was the conflict between home occupation standards and cottage food industries, and needed to say excluding cottage food industry because if you went by the home standards alone, you would be not allowed to have cottage food industries. So it conflicts between each other. So, yeah. So if I understand that one, there's some rules in our code, in the proposed code, about what you have to comply with if you're a home occupation business. And if we did not accept cottage food businesses from these rules, there could be no cottage food businesses. And so another Planning Commission recommendation, which staff failed to add to the proposed zoning code update, was to just accept cottage food businesses from that list of home occupation rules.
And by your point, the Planning Commission already accepted it, it just didn't make it into our version of the document to approve.
These are just things that were approved but fell through the cracks, just for whatever the reasons.
And if we adopt this tonight, does it affect our reading?
No, we can do this on second reading.
Okay, awesome. All right.
So number three was, there was a discussion about garbage acceptable containers, and the Planning Commission agreed to have them, the containers within 300 foot. And the way it reads right now, it's, there's no certainty. It just says within. I think it just says near right now. And the Planning Commission recommendation was to say within 300 feet? Yes. And that didn't make it into the book either? Right. And the other one is, item number four is, if you read in that section, if you guys wanted to go to page 17404-55, you'll see in there, and there is a description of all the items that you are, how's it reference? referencing the tract home discussion. And in there, it just completely leaves out the follow-up discussion about tract homes. If you look, there are just tract homes, and there's no discussion underneath all the text that fell out somewhere. And there's an example of the, what was to happen in that, about tract homes. Yeah, this is an obvious typo. There's standards on that page, 17.404-55, for a bunch of different types of uses. I believe these are the uses that need temporary use? No, there's just standards for a bunch of different types of uses. And somehow, on number 10, tract homes and lot sales offices, all of the standards are just not in, not in the list. So we cannot deal with that tonight because we wouldn't know what to put in there on the fly. So what we're going to have to do with that is just bring back an amendment to the zoning, a zoning amendment in the future to add the standards back in there. If it is founded, the Planning Commission, I don't know what minute it was, but that discussion, is that allowed to fill in the blank? Not without knowing the exact language tonight, so.
Well, and a text amendment is allowable and easy to do after the first of the year.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so without number four. So number five, we made a discussion that parking lots be allowed in all commercial zones, and it didn't get added into business park or industrial in the book, which I believe is just a error? Yeah, I do seem to recall at our special meeting on November 7, thanks, Stacy, when you made that motion to allow parking lots as a permitted use in commercial zones, I believe we clarified that industrial zones and business park would also be included in your motion. So that was just an error, that that did not get reflected in the final draft. And again, as I stated here, this would make the casinos parking lot a legal, non-conforming use, but my intent was to have it in all the zones. Number six, when we talked about reciprocal parking agreements, the way it's reading now, it's, the off-site parking area shall be located within the same block or 300 foot. We put the 300-foot limiter on it. If it's on the same block, and that section was actually left in, I believe should have been removed. This could allow one to be at one corner, one at the other. So technically, a reciprocal parking could be, if it's in the same block, 600 foot away, which makes it arbitrary because if your business is in the middle, then it can only be 300 foot. If you're on the corner, it can be 600 foot. But our discussion and my intent was that it's at the most 300 foot away. I think the attorney could. No, I think you did a good job of that one. So if we delete the words "within the same block or," that will make sure that any off-site parking is within 300 feet of the use. And that was the intent of the council's motion, as I recall it. Okay. Number seven is the typo errors that is mentioned about with sections starting at F through M, and it should be A through H, which is a simple. And then the other one is on page 17308-2, that's where that item starts on C through G, and it should go through A through E. And then there was one, the city attorney found, another one in the following page. Yeah, the next section after, after 17.308.040, the, for some reason, the section started with letter B, and so it needs to start with letter A. So those are easy typos. Okay. And then the next one is on the number eight, so 8A, city attorney reviewed the meeting, and 8A is not correct. But this was about the special event overlay emissions that the council approved on 11/17/19. But you are correct, it's correct, B is correct? Yes, your 8B there is correct. Councilmember Vega made a motion, or Vega recommended, and then it was approved in the final motion, to add the text that you have there that was recommended by Steve Bridge. So it says, temporary events shall cease on the last date printed on the permit, and all related equipment, supplies, projects, and personnel related to the special event, temporary use permit, and not part of the day-to-day operation of the business, shall be removed from the site. And then, if no changes to the facility have occurred, the applicant may apply for a ministerial, across the counter, new temporary use permit, which may be approved for a 12-month period. The council voted to add that language, but it did not make it into this final document. So we can correct that tonight. Okay, so. The other thing, though, another thing that didn't make it into this final document is also about the special TUPs. The council voted to delete the word posted when it talked about posted occupancy loads, and the word posted is still in here. So we can correct that tonight as well. And that's all the recommendations that I found.
Councilmember Vega?
I do have a question to Councilman Mosby and the city attorney here. Thank you for bringing that up, as far as the ministerial use. My question is on the verbiage, okay? New temporary use permit, which may be approved for a 12-month period, sounds very singular and simplistic, but does that, is that for another 12-month period, and then now you got to go through the regular process? Or what if it was multiple 12-year, or 12-month periods with no changes, and these people came back year after year? You know what I mean? Say they had several years here with no changes.
The way it's set up right now, they would have to come back in the city hall every year and get another 12-month permit. And unfortunately, even if you wanted to change that tonight, we cannot, because all we can do tonight is correct this based on what the council voted on last time.
I hope my question was valid, though.
Yes, it's a valid question, but it's, but as it reads right now, it's just a 12-month renewal.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any more questions for staff or Councilmember Mosby before we open it to public comment? And it is open for public comment?
So just for clarity, what I think I heard the city attorney say was that if we discover something after this that was a mistake, rather than having to go through the whole process of going back to the Planning Commission again and going all the way down through this, we could just come back to council and correct a mistake, or an oversight, or something that was inconsistent. And I would hope that you would clarify that with the city attorney, and if the motion to approve had to be couched in a certain way to accomplish that, that we could do that. I am aware of two other things that I found in my reading that were misses, not something that was addressed, but there are two inconsistencies that just got missed in the process. And I imagine by the time everybody gets done looking at it, there'll be two or three more. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close public comment and bring it back for council. Any other discussions before motion? Councilmember Cordova?
I would agree with public comment that we need clarification on that, because one of the things that I feel like we've talked about is I feel like we've talked about is these changes need to happen, and we worked really hard to make some of these changes, but if they're still errors, we don't wanna have to wait another 30 years before we can make these changes.
The member of the public who spoke was not correct. After we adopt this tonight, any amendment to the zoning code has to go through planning commission and to the council, even if it's just a text amendment. But there are errors and inconsistencies probably in every zoning code of every city in the state that cities work on fixing piece by piece gradually as the years go, go on, and it's very difficult to have an absolutely perfect document, so I'm sure that problems, inconsistencies will be found in the future, and we just have to do zoning amendments through the planning commission and through the council to fix them.
Thank you for the clarification, um, I just hope that when we do have issues, that we're able to go about it in a much more efficient manner than what I experienced being almost a year on this dais of, of what seemed like an uphill battle for the planning commission and for everyone involved, so.
I hope we don't have to adopt a whole new zoning code for, maybe, uh, after everyone in this room is no longer with us, that's, that's my hope.
Councilmember Mosby.
So the city clerk advised me that item number eight there was the, oh, 7th, not the 17th, so just correction on that one. No, it's good, thank you. I have brain dead after reading this thing and that thing, and. So, but there's no further discussion, I'd put forward the motion that needs to be put forward, but the city attorney wanted to, uh, wind that one up.
You could make a motion to, um, read the title with further reading waived of the, uh, or, I'm sorry. A motion to approve staff recommendation with the changes recommended by Councilmember Mosby is the only motion that's needed.
And that's the motion I would make.
And I will give you your second. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Last item on the agenda is number seven, establishment of provisional business tax certificate procedure under the Senate Bill 2005 and business tax certificate stormwater processing fee. Adoption of Resolution Number 6293, parentheses 19, and 6294, parentheses 19. And we have Stacy Lawson, our senior environmental coordinator, to make the presentation.
And before we begin, I want to call your attention to the fact that Attachment 4, I've made a revision to Attachment 4, which is being handed out. There are copies, uh, outside on the table for any of the public members who might wish to, um, look at that. However, the change is only one sentence, and I'll read it out. On October 2nd of 2019, the California governor signed Senate Bill 205, which requires any person operating a business regulated under the state industrial stormwater general permit to demonstrate their enrollment in the permit when applying for a business tax certificate. They are requiring that in every application for a business tax certificate, the business identify whether or not they are, um, subject to the requirements of the water code, and, so we are setting up a system to address that. One of the opportunities that each council has, or each governing body has, is to allow for those businesses which are renewing their BTC to have three months with a provisional BTC in which to, uh, seek their approval through the regional board for, under the industrial general permit. That way, they continue their business under their BTC, and when they get their, um, permit, they come back with their permit number, we issue a formalized full BTC and move on from there. It's a little bit complex because it does require some additional review and some additional, um, considerations, and that is gonna cost something. And so, um, tonight, we're recommending that there be some, uh, recoupment of the fee. The recommendation was for $25, which is not a full, uh, recoupment, recoupment of the anticipated fee, but would be, you know, would put some money toward that. This is an unfunded mandate, as oftentimes happens. And while we don't like unfunded, unfunded mandates, we are required to comply with them. And so therefore, staff recommends, oh wait, let me go back to Attachment 4. Attachment 4, the SB 205, has specifics about what has to be on your attachment that we will then have to keep for X number of years as evidence that we have complied with this law. And the section that I added was that, uh, option B, one, they have to identify the standard industrial classification code, uh, that their business might qualify under. Or B, the new option, that the business for which a BTC is being requested is not a regulated industry as defined on, in Section 1338, 3.5 of the water code. There are several, there's a SIC code for pretty much every business, but there are businesses that aren't governed under the water code. Attorneys, doctors, real estate agents, grocery stores, all kinds of things that aren't regulated under the industrial code. And so, this would give that option to mark the box for any of those BTC, people seeking a BTC whose business don't fall under an industrial manufacturing type of use. The types of uses that are covered are cement manufacturing, mineral mining, overall manufacturing, and it does include beer, wine, spirits, and food that's distributed, but there are some fine lines, and because there are fine lines, if we were to come up with, uh, business that didn't have a clear number of their, um, permit under the regional board, and we would suggest that they talk with the regional board, because my experience with that is that the regional board oftentimes asks them a lot of questions, evaluates their use, and determines whether they really need a permit or not, and there are different kinds of permits, too. There's a full permit, and we have a couple of those that we have for our operations. But then there's also the no exposure permit, which is less money, less review, less onerous. So even if they did have to have a permit, then they might qualify for the other ones, and the regional board can help them with that. But they're the ones who make the final determination. I, the other uses are automobile salvage yards and wrecking yards, and the one that the regional board says is the most difficult to tease out is vehicle maintenance shops. So I'm not proposing that I'm gonna describe to you which vehicle maintenance shops might be regulated. I don't know what the criteria is, and that's something that they would need to figure out. I know that they've had some difficulty in the past trying to figure that out. So, given that, only these businesses that would, we would only be looking at the businesses that would fall under these groups, even initially. All the rest of the businesses wouldn't fill this out. Or, yeah, we would only have them fill out the ones that, that potentially could be in this area. Okay, so I'll make the recommendation, sorry, it's late, and it's convoluted. Okay, staff recommends the city council establish a provisional business tax certificate procedure along with a stormwater processing fee to address the requirements of the California Senate Bill at 205, SB 205. Adopt Resolution 629319, establishing a provisional business tax certificate procedure, Attachment 1, and adopt Resolution Number 2, 629419, updating the master fee schedule to adopt a fee for processing of stormwater information in BTC applications, Attachment 2, or for provide alternative direction. Thank you, and are there questions?
Councilmember Mosby.
I just think that the resolutions could have had a little more clarification, so we, we understand that only the people who have to have this potential industrial discharge permit are the ones who would pay the $25, or is it just any new business that comes to the counter? So if it's, if it's a dress shop comes to this counter, are they gonna have to pay the $25 fee?
I think the way that we were envisioning it was that if you were an industrial use, then you would have the fee because it would be referred for review by staff. The dress shop is not an industrial use, and so, given this list that I've gone through, if it's not a manufacturing use, if it's not an auto body shop, if, and even that might not work. Because they said if it's specific, like cabinetry, if it's specific to a house, and they're doing custom cabinetry, it doesn't matter. It doesn't fall under this. So, there are not gonna be very many, there are, um, I expect, there are a number of, there are a few permits already in town of private businesses. And I know that in the past years, the regional board has done an outreach to the wineries, and I know a number of wineries have been reviewed and have the no exposure certificate. So I don't know that there will really be very many of these that come up on renewal that don't have a permit, and, um, overall, I don't know that how many straight manufacturing we would have that would come in for a permit, and then go through this process. So I think it's gonna not be very many.
That's, the language in here, the way you read it, it, it can kinda read that anybody who's coming in, but you've clarified that. Well, I don't know if there's language that you could put in there that explained that a little bit more, like as an example off the list that, that you read, it does state further back in on Attachment 3 that, uh, when applying to a county for initial business license or business license renewal, a person who conducts a business operation that is regulated industry, so if a qualifier in there is a regulated industry, because my first couple readings over this looked like everybody was going to, who was a new business. But I think it's regulated industry businesses.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Mosby, I think you're right, it's, it's very broad language right now, but what we could do to clarify that it's only the regulated industries that would need to pay the $25, is in Section 2 of the fee resolution, we could add, uh, after it says, add a fee of $25 for stormwater processing of a BTC application, we could add there, buy any regulated industry as defined in Business and Professions Code 16,000.3.
Yeah, I think that would clear off my, my biggest concern. The, the other question I have is generally when we're doing a fee component, we usually have the analytics behind it that's kinda state how many are, are gonna be out there and be charged. I know we're going through that big massive fee book a couple of years ago, and it sounds like we don't really know how many.
I'm sorry.
How, how many of these $25?
We don't know offhand, I ran through the existing, and maybe there's less than 10. I, it's, it's difficult to say, I don't know how many of the wineries have the NEC.
Okay.
So, but at the same time, they had, did an outreach about two years ago. And so there's probably less than 20. The other thing, question I had to ask here was, you said the Business and Professions Code versus the Water Code citation? That is defined in the law?
I did say Business and Professions Code, the, the actual definitions in the Water Code, but the Business and Professions Code section refers to the Water Code section, so I thought the Business and Professions would be fine.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
So just for clarification, Stacy, um, the $25 is because the city or staff has to create a report to the regional water board of, of the information in regards to the, the number of businesses that it, or that that particular business needs to be reported, correct?
Okay, two different things. First, the $25 doesn't probably cover the expense of doing the process. But it's because the city clerk would then have to determine which ones would be referred for stormwater review, we would review it. We have to maintain documentation and keep that over a period of years. And we need to review it and make a determination on whether we need to, um, recommend that the applicant go to the regional board and talk with them to see if they're required to have a permit or not. So that's the, just that additional time spent on that. As far as reporting to the regional board, this, uh, SB 205 requires that if they ask, we will need to identify those that, um, might need a permit. However, our MS4 permit, um, requires us to already do that for those that are in town. So, that's why I think there are not very many, because there weren't very many that we found since 2016 that even came close.
Okay, the only reason I ask is 'cause I know that, um, business owners are required to register and have an online profile, and they're, they're pretty much doing the work to go on there and certify themselves, and they have to get an engineer to do, you know, the certification, and so I just wanted clarification as to what the city's $25 were for versus what the actual business owner pays or has to endure and go through.
Yeah, and maybe we wanna be more specific about that, because if the business owner is one of these that already has an NEC, or the couple that ha, are under permit, all they have to do is write their permit number on the application. And it doesn't ever get referred for review because they already have their permit. Right, and no $25 because they've already got their permit.
Councilmember Vega.
So it's a fee recapture, um, and I understand that, but is it a yearly? It sounds like it's yearly just to get your tax certificate, the burden of proof that comes up here and going to the water board.
You know, that's something that we hadn't discussed in detail, but many of these businesses are ongoing, and every year they renew. And so I think that maybe there's some way that we could keep a listing, I know we have a listing of those businesses and recognize one, you know, year after year, that those wouldn't have to go back through the renewal, and if they get a permit, if they needed a permit, or they needed to talk with the regional board, we would refer them. And if they get that permit, then it's not gonna happen again to them.
Yeah, we, I, I'd like to see that clarified, because to implement a fee structure with so much gray area, I, I think is, is, uh, is really not where we need to go. I understand the recapture of it, but then again, um, since the permit sounds like it's, it could be called on a renewal if it's not clarified, that's an additional burden to the, um, business on a yearly basis, if they have to go to the water board every year, so it'd be nice to clarify that.
Okay, I think that that actually wouldn't happen, because I think the way we could administer it would be that this first year, because it's a new law, and it comes into effect on January 1st, those people who renew, and they renew in June, everybody who renews in June gets a review, and after that, we only deal with new applications.
So, give me the. So, give me the scenario should we not approve this resolution. If you wouldn't get the, be able to charge a fee, and you wouldn't be able to implement it, and what are the repercussions to that?
Okay, there's two different resolutions.
Right.
The repercussions of, and I might defer to the city attorney, but we would be in violation of state law. Not so much on the fee, but on the first.
So on the fee, that's a separate issue. So without charging the fee, they would still have to go through the processes, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I wanted to clarify that. I just say, you know what, without having clear definitions of the variables in here, or at least more examples and a little bit more clarification, I wouldn't be able to support a fee increase right now because it's too vague. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff before we open it to public comment? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we will close the public comment and bring it back for council. Councilmember Mosby.
So, the city attorney, could you go over one more time your addition that would help out on that?
Yeah. In the fee resolution, which is 6294-19, in Section 2, it says the master fee schedule of fees and charges for city services is hereby amended to add a fee of $25 for stormwater processing of a BTC application. And then we could add, buy any regulated industry as defined by Business and Professions Code 16,000.3. That would address your comment.
And I think that would address yours, too, Councilmember Vega. I think that would fill in the void.
Well, if you, if you wanted to address Councilmember Vega's comment and not charge fees for renewals, I think that's essentially what Councilmember Vega was trying to get to.
Well...
No?
Are we charging fees for the renewal?
Well, the way that it reads now, I think it is kind of unclear. So if you wanted to make sure you're not charging fees for renewals, we could add a sentence at the end of Section 2 that says that the fee shall only be charged for new BTC applications and not renewals.
Was the intention of staff to charge for a renewal? Is there a processing time?
Yes, there would be a processing time. As I said, in the original year, the first year, the renewals would be reviewed. I don't think there'd be very many that actually would qualify for referral. But for those where they were referred, then there would be a processing time. After that, because the policy would be just to look at new applications beyond that point and not the renewals, then it would only apply to the new applications that were referred.
So is that, if I can ask the city manager?
Yeah, that, what the city attorney just said, adding that last sentence in there would cover what we've all been talking about. So it would only be to new, renewals wouldn't be impacted.
Okay. So, there's no more discussion with council, I'd make those recommendations, staff recommendation with the additions of those to the resolutions. And I think that would cover my concern and your concern as well, Councilmember Vega.
Councilmember Vega.
You referenced one concern would be the fee, but the process for the renewal is also something I'd like to have clarified. Are they going to be put through the same process regardless of the fee? And a business renewal is similar to anything that hasn't changed. And what's the cost to go to the water board? And what are the repercussions if the water board doesn't respond and it's during a holiday season type thing, and you get three months, but it's November, December, and January, and they don't respond? How would we treat that?
I guess, just as an aside, I would say that knowing the person who has to do this review, they're pretty responsive. They're, they're, when you call them on the phone, they're answering. So I don't anticipate this would be a problem, but it's a good point. But they have a provisional license, and so we might have, if they went to the water board and got some type of a receipt. The difficulty is also that SB 205, to my understanding, was adopted without consultation with the water board.
Again, my question would be, is there a fee to go to the water board? And again, is the process going to change for renewal?
There is no fee to go to the water board. If they are assessed that they need to have a permit, yes, there is a fee associated with the permits, and it depends on what kind you would have to have.
And I'm asking because a renewal, okay? On a renewal, that means they already have a permit, does it expire with their business tax certificate? Or is it in a separate area, okay? I'm just asking these questions because we want to know if maybe the permit is a one time as long as you're in business, since the fee's not going to be charged upon a renewal, as long as there aren't any additional changes.
Okay. Again, I would call this out as two separate processes. There's the city process, which we're required to do, which is to review the BTCs to see if there are any which might come under the Water Code for regional board permit. The regional board's permit process and renewals and everything else is run by them. And yes, it is annual, and yes, you have to pay an annual fee, and we do for our own permits that we operate under the city. So, they will issue annual permits if the business is required to have one.
Yeah. And thank you for the clarification because I'm hearing different things, okay? Because it doesn't sound like it's nailed, and I understand that you're working through it. But Councilman Mosby, it sounds like it's a renewal either way for the water board and the permit. And I'm just concerned with that part of it because it's an additional burden the existing business has to go through. That permit could last longer. I'm just not sure if there's any leeway in the length of time that permit is valid, aside from the fee structure.
I don't think we have any control over the regional water board. This is just our own local processing of, an addendum to their business tax certificate. And the fact that it's going to be the new, but not the renewal is the language.
But as you can hear, the answers, they're vague, okay? Doesn't sound like it's nailed.
I would still present my motion, I think it's best for the city.
Well, you know, being a budget fiscal person, I would think that we wouldn't want to implement a fee unless we knew for sure that it was going to be put down in the way that we expect it to be. Because how many times have we approved a fee structure, and then policy is written afterwards, and then we get surprised? So, city attorney, I'm just asking if we're, if we're good right here with the verbiage that we have moving forward.
With the verbiage?
Because I added a couple more concerns, but I'm not sure if that's going to be addressed with this when it comes back, or is it going to come back to us?
Nothing's going to come back.
See? And that's the reason I'm asking these questions, so we don't get surprised later on.
Councilmember Cordova.
I will second the motion because if you're required to do this, you never forget it. And you have to have an online, and it's, and it's really not something that the city has any control or any regulation over. They're just doing a fee for their side. But if you're required to do this through the regional water board, you know about it, you understand it, you have to go online, you have to do it yourself. So, I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one. Final oral communications on city matters for this evening. The floor is open, you have two minutes.
Good evening, happy holidays. Leah Brightman, I live here in Lompoc. During the October 1st city council meeting, the idea of a pilot safe parking program was discussed. And the majority of the council at that time voted just to basically go la, 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 until the Supreme Court acted. And maybe even in June, suggested Councilmember Mosby. Well, yesterday, the Supreme Court decided not to take up Martin v. Boise. So, we're sort of back at square one. What does this mean? It's still against someone's Eighth Amendment rights to be cited for sleeping on the street. So I suggest in the new year revisiting even a pilot safe parking program. Maybe you could just even la, la, la until March 3rd, when hopefully the city will pass Measure I 2020, and the city will have a little bit more budgetary wiggle room for even a half decent safe parking program. But the next time you, this is brought up, and hopefully you will visit it again, I suggest you really listen and appreciate what the staff is saying. And even just maybe read the packet before the meeting. So this is a situation that needs true leadership, work with your staff and local nonprofits, and really consider going forward with at least a semi-decent pilot safe parking program. So, there's actually rocket science going on right down the street. It can't be that tough.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I'm going to kind of jump, piggyback on some of the statements that were just made because that was an issue. I do a community walk with several pastors, and we were discussing that issue. And I'm not quite certain who mentioned it, but it was acknowledged that we do have River Park. River Park has a park ranger on site. River Park has adequate bathrooms. And so, one of the ideas of a couple of members of the churches was, why don't we, as, as community members, volunteer and do fundraising to get money and then possibly get a discounted camping rate, or at least get the corporate camping rate? And those trailers that are problematic in the neighborhood, maybe we can present them a certificate to go to that and resolve the problem that way. It's a win-win. It's not costing the city any money. The community is volunteering to do this. And we now have an area that's deemed safe for camping, should be deemed safe for overnight parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communication and bring it back to council for comments, meeting reports, council requests. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year. This is our last council meeting of the year. Thank you for your participation, whether you agree or disagree. We're all here for the same purpose, to make Lompoc better than it was yesterday and to move forward. Sustainability is an issue here, and we need to improve Lompoc by improving the aesthetics and the people that we organize with. And I applaud anybody that's doing any kind of volunteer work and organization there. Our last public speaker said he's walking with the pastors and everything, hey, you know what? We all need to do something like that to help people in need. So, anyway, happy holidays. Appreciate everybody that made a comment.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to publicly thank our staff at the, at the, with their life-saving efforts that they did at the, at the landfill, yes, at the landfill. Because I really think that that just goes to show the commitment of our staff and their willingness to always help out. And we hear all these stories all the time, and I think that not enough acknowledgement goes towards saying thank you to all the staff. So I'll say that, at the end of this year, I want to say thank you to all the staff for all your hard work. I appreciate even hearing from the gentleman that was here earlier and saying 32 years of service to the city of Lompoc. Wow. I've visited almost all of the, I think, almost all of the departments within the city of Lompoc, and every single department that I went to, I ran into employees that had been there for 20 years, 30 years. And I think the city of Lompoc will hurt the day that those people leave, and hopefully there is a good succession plan for those people departing when they do. But I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Mosby.
I represented the city of Lompoc at the subregional SB CAG meeting. Probably the biggest area of topic that affects us Lompokans was the discussion of reducing the Clean Air Express's insurance from $10 million down to $5 million. They did have two people stand up and stay, one from Santa Maria runs the bus service there, says their standard is 10 million. A gentleman from Santa Barbara said their standard is 10 million and looking to go into 20 million. So, a discussion ensued about that. I don't support the reduction from 10 million to 5 million, but it'll be brought up here this next Thursday at the full board meeting.
Attended a bunch of meetings, I won't belabor the point. And just wanted to say that we have some impressive things going on in our community. There is a group that is doing regional economic development called the Hourglass Project. They hosted a Vandenberg rollout here in our city hall chambers last week, talking about the expansion of commercial launch at Vandenberg. There is a very aggressive, proactive team working on making those connections and building that out. So that has a huge potential to impact high-tech, well-paying jobs here with, easily within the next year, if not three, and add to the demand for our housing. And that is huge, so watch for that. I attended the Coastal Commission and heard them vote unanimously for the Surf Beach opening. So, having approached them at the very beginning, I thought it was important to go back and say thank you. And thank you to all of the entities that listened, came out to Surf Beach, paid attention, and just ask in the new year that our community learns everything it can about how to respect and support this opening and be able to keep it opening. The last thing I ask is that we definitely bring the safe parking back as soon as possible in the new year. I think it's more important than ever to have that discussion now that the Supreme Court has denied hearing the Ninth Circuit's appeal. And last but not least, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday and ask that we gift each other the safe, warm support, and maybe get through the end of the new year, into the new year, with a better year and reduce the violence on violence of each other. So please, look out for each other, look out for your neighbors, and have a safe and happy holiday. And we will adjourn to our regular city council meeting in the new year on January 7th, 2020.